Good evening and welcome to the January 25, 2022 Regular Meeting of the Gaston County Board of Commissioners. My name is Chad Brown and I serve as the Chairman of the Board as well as the Commissioner of the Riverbend Township. I would like to welcome our viewers and thank Spectrum Cable and AT&amp;T for making it possible for our citizens and for our television audience to livestream audience as well. I would like to, I would like to present your Gaston County Commission, beginning on my far right.
Ronnie Worley, South Point Township.
Alan Fraley, Cherrville Township.
Good evening. Bob Hovis, Crowder's Mountain Township.
At this time, I will ask you to please rise for the invocation by Commissioner Hovis in the Pledge of Allegiance led by Commissioner Fraley.
Please bow with me. Gracious Father, we come to you tonight to take care of the business of Gaston County, to make sure we represent all of our citizens and we continue to move Gaston County forward into a better and more prosperous place. Father, decisions in county government aren't easy, but your board here seriously gives every consideration to every issue. We do that with faithful presence and with everyone in mind. We ask that you bless this board and bless this work. We ask that in Christ's name. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic under which it stands, one nation, under the God in the visible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our next item on the agenda is public hearings. The Commission will take citizens' comments on four public hearings. Comments will be taken on the following issues. Zoning map change ZZ Z22-01, zoning map change Z22-02, also economic development project, uh, conduct authorize the sale of property to approve the incentive grant program. EDC to authorize incentive grant for EQUS. Before we begin, let me outline the rules and procedure for the hearing. Citizens wishing to make comment will be recognized by the Chair and then requested to step to the microphone for their comments. Citizens will state their name and address for the record. Comments will be limited to three minutes. All questions shall be directed to the Chair for response. The Chair shall rule on all points of order during the hearing. Do I have a motion to go into the public hearing? Motion made by Commissioner Worley, seconded by Commissioner Fraley. All in favor? We are now in public hearing. The County Commission will now take citizens' comments on the public hearing zoning map change Z22-01 Jessica Black and Joseph Dane Snead, the applicants. Ms. Janie Camberglue, uh, Long River Planner, Building and Development Services will provide an overview. Once she has completed her comments, citizens' comments will begin and taken after.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
This request is to rezone parcels 157267 and 157266 located at 919 Tot Delanger Road in Cherrville from the I-2 General Industrial Zoning District to the R-2 Single Family Moderate Zoning District. The applicants and property owners are Jessica Black and Joseph Snead. The total acreage of the properties is 3.30 acres. The current and proposed use for this site is residential. Staff is currently reviewing a recombination application for these parcels as well. If we can refer to the maps at this time. Staff's review of the application finds it to be consistent with the comprehensive land use plan as presented. The Planning Board met on January 10th and after discussion, they unanimously recommended approval of the request. Notices were mailed, um, and the property posted in accordance with policy. Mr. Chairman, this concludes my presentation.
Thank you, ma'am. Are there any citizens wishing to comment at this time on this matter? Seeing none, are there any questions from the Board of Commissioners? If there are no additional comments, I will declare the public hearing closed. I will now, before we proceed, let me call on the County Attorney to provide some comments regarding the Planning Board's recommendation. Ms. Rogers.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. The Planning Board voted unanimously to recommend approval of this rezoning. They, the proposed rezoning is in the Rural Future Land Use Plan. Residential homes are located on large lots and are set back from the roads they front upon. It is understood that this is the default use designation for Gaston County. The use going from I-2 to R-2 will make the subject parcel residential in nature, which is consistent with the rural designation and is in harmony with uses within the immediate vicinity.
Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion made by Commissioner Fraley, seconded by Commissioner Hovis. Is there any discussion? All in favor? It is unanimous, Madam Clerk. The County Commission will now take citizens' comments on public hearing zoning map change Z22-02, Cleroy and Sandra Dunlap, the applicants. Ms. Janie Camberglue, Long Range Planner, Building and Development Services will provide an overview. Once she has completed her comments, citizens' comments will be taken. Ms. Camberglue.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This request is to rezone parcel 142291 located at 538 Queens Road in Gastonia from the RS-12 Single Family 12,000 square foot to the R-3 Single Family General Zoning District. The applicants and property owners are Cleroy and Sandra Dunlap. The total acreage of the property is .79 acres. The lot is currently vacant. If we can refer to the maps at this time. There is a mixture of housing types in this area, which includes single-family residences and manufactured housing, including single wides and double wides. Staff's review of the application finds it to be consistent with the comprehensive land use plan as presented. The Planning Board met on January 10th and after discussion, they voted five to zero to not recommend approval of the request. Notices were mailed and the property was posted in accordance with policy. Mr. Chairman, this concludes my presentation.
Thank you, ma'am. Are there any citizens wishing to comment at this time on this matter? Yes, ma'am. Please step to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and then you may stop talk, ma'am, for three minutes.
Good evening, Chairman. Uh, we filed this application because my sister and my grandmother currently live on the property, um, or on Queens Road. My sister lives right next door and I am looking to purchase a double wide home to place on the properties who live next door to my sister and to help provide care for my grandmother who lives two doors down. Um, so we just wanted to ask that you please reconsider, um, allowing us to rezone this property so that I would be able to put an affordable home there. My name is Arlita Nelson. My address is 1207 Culver Spring Way, Charlotte, North Carolina, 28215. Okay. And I want to let you know upfront that the, the board has not made a decision. That came from the Planning Board that, that, so reconsideration will be with this board. Okay. Okay. Yes, sir. Do you have any additional comments, ma'am? Um, just that it's not my property, it's actually my father's property and, um, that is all. Thank you.
Citizens wishing to make comment at this time? Seeing none, are there any questions for the Board of Commissioners? Mr. Worley.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I, I thought, thought I heard you say, Kimberly, that there are single, single wide and double wide mobile homes adjacent to this. Is that what you indicated?
Yes, sir. There is a mixture of housing types in this area.
So, so also stick-built homes?
Yes, sir.
Manufactured homes, both, obviously. Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Seeing none, um, I would declare the hearing and public, uh, hearing closed. Before we proceed to vote, I will ask County Attorney to provide comments regarding the Planning Board's recommendations. Ms. Rogers.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, as you heard, the Planning Board did vote unanimously to recommend disapproval of this request, finding that it was inconsistent with the future land use plan. The proposed rezoning is in the Suburban Development Future Land Use Plan. Suburban development consists of significant single-family residential areas that exist around commercial pockets, representing a standard suburban center. Suburban centers can also include multifamily houses and support services as well. The use going from RS-12 to R-3 will make the subject parcel residential in nature, which is inconsistent with the suburban development designation and the primary commercial uses in the surrounding corridor.
Thank you, Ms. Rogers. This time, do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion to approve the rezoning request.
Motion made to approve is made by Commissioner Worley. Is there a second? Seconded by Commissioner Fraley. Are there any discussions? Commissioner Hovis.
Question of staff?
Yes.
R-3 allows single wide and double wide, correct?
Let me just confirm. Yes, sir.
R-12 does not.
Correct.
So it's basically the type of housing that's on there, not the residential use.
Correct, yes.
Although the comment in the rendering from the Board of, the Planning Board
Yes.
Said the commercial is against the commercial nature of the land use plan.
The surrounding commercial nature.
Okay. Because I, I support, you know, allowing like, said like development in the area, but by going from an R-12 to an R-3 in a single plot, we're basically spot zoning and that puts our ordinance in some level of jeopardy. Uh, I'm not saying I'd vote against it. I say Ms. Penley's going to come and straighten me out, but please do it. Thank you.
Um, yes, sir. Another difference with, with, between the two zoning districts is the lot size. The RS-12 also defines the, the lot size to, um, 12,000 square feet. When this area was zoned, um, you know, sometimes we look at the, the density of the lot sizes when we're doing an overall zoning district and not necessarily the, the types of housing. Um, as staff mentioned, uh, this particular neighborhood has a mixture of non-conforming homes, um, in that area already. Um, so the, while it may be spot zoning, the, the home itself or the placement of the home would not be out of character for the existing, um, housing types that are already there. Um, when the Planning Board referenced commercial uses, um, if we could back up a second, um, they were probably referring to the fact that this neighborhood is off of a major corridor, which is 321 South. Um, just to clarify that a little bit for the board as well.
Correct, correct. And also, the, the, um, the R-3, of course, is 3,000 square foot.
30,000 square feet, yes, sir.
R-3 is 30,000?
Yes, sir. 30,000 square feet.
Okay. Thank you.
Is there any more discussion at this time on this matter? I will now call for the vote. All in favor? All opposed? It's three to one, Madam Clerk. The next item on the agenda, the County Commission will take citizens' comments on a public hearing to authorize the sale of real property for economic development to the authorized A-level for economic incentive grants and a local match for one NC grant, Project Conduct. Mr. Donnie Hicks, EDC Director, will provide an overview. Once he has completed his comments, citizens' comments will be taken and, uh, at this time, Mr. Hicks.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm here tonight to talk about Project Conduct. It's a $50 million investment, a foreign manufacturing company looking to establish their first U.S. facility. We competed against a number of locations, including others in North Carolina, and they decided this is their frontrunner. If they can work it out here, I think we have a great chance of locating it. They're considering buying roughly 11 acres from us and, uh, building the building. The building would probably start in 2024 because of a certain timing of financing and construction. And real quickly, I just want to go through, I've asked you to sell a lot of property. We'll go through real quickly and show you on the, on the map, if we can refer to the screen. Maybe not. Okay. I can't see it here. So I'll start at the top. This is the Dallas-Cherrville Highway and this is GNT. GNT is our natural food color and manufacturing facility from the Netherlands. They opened in October and already have a good number of people started there and their operations are underway. Across the street is Project Duo. That's a U.S.-Italian joint venture that we agreed to sell some time ago. The deed to sell was prepared today, so we're days hopefully away from closing on that sale. Further down is Project Ashbury. That's a, another food project. We agreed to sell that a couple of months ago. We're still working through all the work to, um, the due diligence on the site and also incentives with the state. Across the street is Project Canol. That's a German company that we approved several months ago, announced back in the summer. They make all types of conveying systems and ship machines for machine tools. That'll be their headquarters, tech center, and training center. This site would be directly above it and we, similar nature to all those. So we buy parcel numbers. We've sold about half, or have about half the park committed by acreage, just a little bit less than that. They're going to pay us $75,000 an acre and then they would qualify for a Level 4 grant and we'd ask the board at the same time, if the state offers a 1 NC grant, to be able to use our tax grant as the match for that. We have a 5% match on it. We anticipate that they will get a 1 NC grant. That saves us from coming back to the board again. And I'd be glad to answer any questions anybody has.
Are there any citizens wishing to make comment at this issue at this time? Seeing none, are there any from the Board of Commissioners? Seeing none? I would declare the public hearing closed and no additional comments have been rendered. Um, is there a motion to approve?
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Motion made by Commissioner Hovis, seconded by Commissioner Worley. Any discussion? All in favor? It is unanimous, Madam Clerk. The County will now take, uh, citizens' comments on a public hearing to approve Gaston County Level 1 incentive and authorize an economic development agreement with EDA with EQUS.
So EQUS is a Pennsylvania-based development group, sorry, that's building a 300,000 square foot spec building in Kings Mountain and it's largely, the shell is largely complete. And what they're asking us to do is what we've done for a couple of the developers is simply go ahead and agree that they qualify for a Level 1 incentive grant, which they clearly do, and put that in an economic development agreement. That way they can provide the assurance to the tenants that that is already in place. We can't do this with these, with Apple Creek-type projects because all those buildings are to be built. The shell's already up and this helps us on the recruitment side because we can do the same thing. If somebody looks at the building, we can say, this has already been pre-approved for this grant. It's our policy, but we've taken that one step further. And so all they're asking for is an economic development agreement that qualifies what they've already been told they would get.
Is there any citizens wishing to comment on this issue at this time? Seeing none, are there any boards, any questions from the Board of Commissioners? Seeing none at this time, I would declare the public hearing closed. Thank you. Is there a motion? Motion made by Commissioner Worley, seconded by Commissioner Hovis. Any discussion? All in favor? It is unanimous, Madam Clerk. Thank you. This concludes tonight's public hearings. The next is the approval of the business agenda. Are there any revisions to the business agenda at this time that need to be pulled?
Motion to approve, Mr. Chair.
Motion made by Commissioner Hovis, seconded by Commissioner Fraley. All, uh, any discussion? All in favor? It is unanimous, Madam Clerk. The next is approval of the minutes. You were provided the draft minutes for the regular meeting of December 14th, 2021. Organizational meeting, December 14th, 2021. Closed session minutes from December 14th, 2021. Special meetings and closed sessions of January 7, 2022. Closed session for January 11th, 2022. Special meeting of January 11th, 2022. Are there any revisions? Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes as presented?
Motion to approve.
Motion made by Commissioner Fraley, seconded by Commissioner Hovis. Any discussion? All in favor? It is unanimous, Madam Clerk. The next item is citizens' recognition. Our, a portion of the board's agenda is set aside for the purpose of allowing citizens the opportunity to offer comments and suggestions. This comment period is not intended to require the Commission or staff to answer questions or provide a response. Questions requiring a response shall be answered as soon as possible through the County Manager's office. Citizen recognition will be limited to one hour, also to three minutes tonight. As I call your name, please step to the podium and state your name and address. The first citizen to speak tonight is, uh, David Klinecki. And David, if you could just give your name and address, I'll put an arrow where you want to on that and that way we take care of that for you. Thank you.
Good evening, Chairman Brown, fellow Commissioners. Thank you very much for allowing me to, to be here tonight. On behalf of the entire Piedmont Lithium team, we wanted to give you an opportunity to, to follow up on a few questions that were raised during one of the previous work sessions so we can give you guys some more information. Um, one of the topics was around water. There was a question regarding water contamination and one regarding the wells. Um, this is obviously on everyone's mind and it's the reason why we recently ran a letter to the editor on this subject in the Gazette to attempt to educate the community on this topic and Brian will talk more about this tonight. We will not artificially alter nor, or occur natural occurring water, nor will we use it in our operations as part of our integrated facility. We will also have an extensive monitoring system in place at all key points throughout our operations. And lastly, this project will not cause a widespread drying up of local wells that has been alleged and we will be happy to share all the related hydrological and geological studies at your convenience. Another topic was around lithium ion batteries. And there was a question, I think, to, to Commissioner Hovis around how much battery, how much lithium goes in your electric vehicle. Um, the ba, the majority of the vehicles and battery makers today are moving towards a high nickel content type battery, which requires lithium hydroxide. This allows cars to go faster, um, go farther and, and actually charge a lot faster than, than current technology. That said, if you assume that the average lithium ion battery size is around 60 kilowatt hours today and that'll contain an average of about 55 kilograms of lithium hydroxide per vehicle, our plan is, is scheduled to produce about 30,000 tons of lithium hydroxide. That means it'll supply roughly the demands of 550,000 vehicles that would be on the road, uh, using that, our material. There was another question about alternative technologies out there and, and would that jeopardize the growth of electric vehicles in this space? Um, lithium ion batteries are a proven technology and are in commercial use today and will most likely be in use for the next 30 or more years. There are other technologies out there on the drawing board. You hear some things about solid-state batteries. Ironically, those require more lithium in them. Um, and then you hear things around hydrogen. And if you look at the recent announcement from Toyota, who's going to bring their battery manufacturing plant to the state of North Carolina, they actually were really strong proponents of hydrogen, which tells you now that they've switched their, their technology trends towards lithium ion batteries. In the, in the last 12 to 18 months, there's been over $600 billion of announcements, uh, that have been made by auto OEMs and battery manufacturers to invest in this technology. So we're pretty, we're pretty confident that, um, this technology will be around. So we're pretty, we're pretty confident that this technology will be around for a little while. The last question was around reclamation and what happens to our site, you know, 40 to 50 years from now after we've, we've finished operations. As previously discussed, you know, we're committed, obviously, to returning that site of our operation in a condition that's ready for most any use that the county decides, and we're collaboratively wanting to work with the county to discuss those options. We will conduct progressive reclamation as we move from one quarry site to the next, and it's certainly conceivable that this area, since it's already going to have water and other, other utilities, that it can relocate other types of businesses. Okay, no problem. And I'm going to leave this.
Motion made by Commissioner Hovis, seconded by my Commissioner Worley. All in favor? Unanimous, Madam Clerk. The next person to speak will be Brian Rizzinger. I'll put you down for the 211, correct? And that way, from now, we'll just use the business address when y'all do that. That way, you have.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman and Commissioners. And for the record, my wife and daughter and I do live in Belmont, so appreciate the opportunity to speak with you this evening. I'm going to spend my three minutes talking about water, which could be a meeting all unto itself, and hopefully it will be at some point. With respect to our proposed project, the safety of the community and our teammates is our number one priority. So it's the number one thing we think about every day. We understand water is in the minds of the community as it should be. It's a valuable resource. It should be protected and preserved. No question, it should be protected and preserved, and we are all in alignment, I think, on that front. To that point, elaborate a little bit on what David just said. We will not artificially alter the ground or surface water in any way. We're simply pumping out naturally occurring water from rainfall or any water that's been collected as we go through the extraction process. This water goes into holding ponds where the sediment settles to the bottom, and then the water's just returned to the earth. We aren't using any harmful chemicals in the process, and we're not adding anything to the water that wasn't already present naturally. We'll also have an extensive water monitoring network. It will be constantly monitoring water levels. If we become aware of any kind of issue, it will be corrected, period. When it comes to water used in our refining operations, it will go through the same wastewater treatment process that's used by any industrial operation that is in Gassen County. So we'll follow the same, same processes they use to manage and treat their wastewater. And to be clear, because I think it's been intimated perhaps in some previous hearings, we will not disperse water from our refining process into any of the streams or wetlands. And lastly, and apologies in advance, because this too could be kind of a single-subject meeting with scientists and hydrologists just to talk about groundwater and wells. There's not a lake or a river that's, that's right below the surface of the, of the ground, so that if there's a drilling that takes place, it's not like pulling a stopper from a bathtub where water kind of evenly and immediately drains or lowers. It's a pretty complex system, so in the bedrock, there are disconnected veins and channels and aquifers, so it's highly, highly improbable that we would negatively impact residential wells.
Thank you, sir. The next is Austin Devaney.
Good evening, Chairman Brown and fellow commissioners. My name's Austin Devaney, and I'm with Piedmont Lithium, and I live in Fort Mill, South Carolina, but you can count it as Belmont, North Carolina. I wanted to share with you this evening some of the current statistics on mining in North Carolina. As of this past summer, the North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality identified that there are 747 active mines in the state of North Carolina. In the six counties nearest to and including Gassen County, there are 37 active mines. In the Catawba River Basin, where we would be part of, there are 40 active mines. These mines, in many cases, fuel and support development in their local areas where they are located. I live approximately 4.8 miles from a mine, Martin Marietta's Pineville Quarry. Unless I drive by those gates, I wouldn't know it was there. I ride my bike near that mine boundary on a regular basis and very familiar with it. Within one mile of that site, there are home sites, a cattle farm, high-tech manufacturers like Schaffler Bearing, who makes precision bearings for the automotive industry, and even Kerewinds, that I'm sure many of you have visited. The materials that are mined in North Carolina range from plain oil aggregate, sand, dirt, and rock, used for construction purposes, but also high-tech materials like high-purity quartz used in computer chips, phosphate used in fertilizer, and many other industrial products. Piedmont will not only produce lithium, we will also produce high-purity quartz, feldspar for building products, and MICA. Additionally, and I wanted to point out one other thing about the mining registry in North Carolina, the land that Piedmont has submitted for their permit will not register among the top 10 mines in the state, which all those 10 mines, the top 10 mines average 4,000 acres in size, or nearly three times the size of the Piedmont site. Thanks for your time this evening.
Thank you, sir. The next speaker will be Emily Blackburn.
Chairman Brown and fellow commissioners, my name is Emily Blackburn, and I'm a resident of 106 Stonewall Estates Drive in Cherryville, North Carolina. I graduated from Cherryville High School in 2014, then attended Appalachian State University, where I received my bachelor's degree in geology. After graduating in 2018, I applied to every job I could find online, most of which were west of the Mississippi. This led me to working in Apple Valley, Minnesota, 1,157 miles from home. I left my parents, brother, grandparents, aunts, uncles, cousins, to pursue a career in a field that I love so deeply. After a few months of working in Minnesota, I received a call from Lamont Leatherman, a Lincoln native, about a career opportunity in Gassen County as a geologist. I couldn't believe it. Never in a million years did I think I could have my dream job as a geologist in my hometown. But here I am, a geologist for Piedmont Lithium in Cherryville, North Carolina. My story reminds me of a female engineer from Gastonia who smoked at the commissioners' meeting on July 20. She listed out all the places across the country where she had worked. Gaston County was not mentioned. This speaks volumes. Piedmont Lithium will be able to create jobs for the engineers and geologists like me, who are local and can stay local, and in the process, create jobs for other people in the area, small businesses, restaurants, manufacturing companies, and other service industries. It will mean more help and funding for local schools and charities. This is my home, and I would never work for a company that was going to harm my home. The number one thing we focus on at work every day is how to protect and preserve our environment. Our business is about helping to save the planet, not hurt it. These past three years, while working with Piedmont Lithium and its staff, I have found them to be reputable and engaging with both affected property owners as well as surrounding communities, as well as recognizing the value of property rights and investment in the Gaston County economy. I'm proud to work here. I believe in what we are trying to do and in the way we are trying to do it. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. The last speaker will be Melissa Gordon.
Thank you, Chairman Brown and fellow commissioners, for the opportunity to speak tonight. I currently manage the community and government relations for Piedmont Lithium and wanted to speak on a question that was raised during the work session of January 11 regarding Piedmont Lithium's involvement in the community. Of course, our sustainability efforts require social and community progress along with economic growth and environmental stewardship. I am proud to say that Piedmont's program extends far beyond the scope of business operations and has made an immediate impact on the community and the county in which we live and work. In 2021, we took the holidays to focus on the community and the immediate needs that were expressed to our company and made contributions to Gaston County DHHS, Children and Family Services, the Cathy Mayberry Kloniger Center, Belmont Police Department's Shop with a Cop Program, Cherryville Area Ministries, Backpack Weekend Food Program, and for the second year, donated to the United Ways Christmas Wishes Program. We are, we also contributed over 100 volunteer hours to the Meals on Wheels program alone during the months of November and December. We are also constantly connecting with our community and other businesses by sponsoring events through our memberships with several chambers of commerce. And I can't forget to mention our support as a corporate partner and sponsor for the Shield Museum, Gastonia Honey Hunters, Gaston County Schools, Cherryville High School Baseball, and most recently, the Cherryville High School Education Foundation. This is not a time for us to stand up here and toot our horns. We're responding to the claim of, that we are not good stewards of the community, which is not the case. We're grateful for the opportunities that we've been a part of, and we not only want to be a part of our community, but serve it as well. As we begin a new year, we continue to serve this community and be an advocate for Gaston County and a company that makes a positive difference. I would like to end by reading an email from a board member of the Backpack Weekend Food Program regarding our recent gift, and look forward to sharing more emails such as this one in the future. Dear Melissa, it is sad that many children in our county have no food and when not in school, but Piedmont Lithium did what needs to be done to help address that harsh reality. Piedmont's gift to the Backpack Weekend Food Program makes a huge difference for the children served, ensuring healthy, nutritionally sound meals that they would not otherwise have. We are so grateful for Piedmont Lithium's gift and for your caring. Thanks to Piedmont Lithium, we will continue to strive to ensure no child in Gaston County goes hungry on the weekends. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. This closes the citizens' recognition portion. I will now move forward to the approval of the consent agenda. Do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda? Motion made by Commissioner Hovis, seconded by Commissioner Fraley. Any discussion? All in favor? It is unanimous, Madam Clerk. The non-consent agenda is the next item. The Board of Commissioners appoint the Office of Mr. William T. Stetser as the County Attorney effective January 31, 2022, and the, and the approval of employment contract. Do I have a motion? Motion made by Commissioner Worley, seconded by Commissioner Hovis. Any discussion? All in favor? Congratulations, Mr. Stetser. Would you care to speak, or you want to wait?
No, sir, I'll wait.
I'm sure you've got a lot to say later on, got many years to be here, so. There were no items pulled from the consent agenda. We will now move to appointments. Commissioner Worley.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll also be taking care of Commissioner Johnson's appointments as well. The Gaston County Board of Adjustments wishes to reappoint Mr. Chuck Ballard to that Gaston County Housing Board. Also, Commissioner Johnson, Planning Board, a reappointment request for Claire Green Fallon and Travel and Tourism Advisory Board, reappointment, Elizabeth Utic for reappointment. All those in a motion?
Seconded by Commissioner Fraley. Any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous, Madam Clerk. Mr. Worley.
Yes, yes, yeah. I got one reappointment to the Child Pathology Prevention Team, Dr. Gina Ramsey.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Fraley, seconded by Commissioner Hovis. All in favor? Commissioner Hovis.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have one appointment. It's a new appointment to the Caramont Health Board of Direct, Board of Directors, Mr. Thomas Ostel. That's the only one I have tonight, sir.
Motion made by Commissioner Hovis, seconded by Commissioner Worley. Any discussion? All in favor? It is unanimous, Madam Clerk. Madam Clerk, I'll be presenting Commissioner Philbeck's first. The Gassen County Board of Adjustments for reappointment requested for Monte Monteleone. The Gassen County Board of Adjustment, or, and the Gassen County Housing Board, reappointment requested for Mr. Robert Lancaster. Planning Board application was received by Michael McGee. Travel and Tourism application received by Patricia Farmer.
I'll second those, Mr. Chair.
Seconded by Commissioner Hovis. Any discussion? All in favor? It is unanimous, Madam Clerk. Sorry, there's a lot of pink sheets over here. I have one for the Workforce Development Board, application received by Ms. Susan Farmer. Seconded by Commissioner Fraley. All in favor? It is unanimous, Madam Clerk. Vacant appointments for the full board. QNRC, Dr. Michael McLeod put in an application for that.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Commissioner Hovis. Any discussion? All in favor? It is unanimous, Madam Clerk. All right, now we've got a few items. Chair appointments, Equalization and Review Board. Going to put Brian Wyneth as the chairman of the Equalization and Review.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Hovis. Any discussion? All in favor? It is unanimous, Madam Clerk. The North Carolina Association of County Commissioners, that used to be Commissioner Worley and Commissioner Hovis. Commissioner Hovis was the alternate last year. Do you have a problem with him being the delegate this year, Commissioner Worley? Would you care to be the alternate? I just tried to make them all at one time. So that, Madam Clerk, that'd be, the voting delegate will be Commissioner Hovis, second with the ex officio being delegate if his, his absence would be Commissioner Worley. Motion. Seconded by Commissioner Worley. All in favor? It is unanimous, Madam Clerk. We do have a couple of things here. Central Carolina Council of Governments, we need an alternate, and we also need a voting for the Farmers Market Advisory Board. If anybody wishes to look at that, please be thinking about those if you care to be on them, or if you want to take it tonight, we can do anything.
I'll go on the Farmers.
All right. I'll second that. Commissioner Hovis to the Farmers Market Advisory Board, seconded by myself. All in favor? It is unanimous, Madam Clerk. All right, reports. Any commissioner have a report? Mr. Worley? No, Mr. Fraley?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As the board knows and the public, I am the representative to Caramont Health, and Caramont Health has some, a lot of stuff going on. As you know, the Critical Care Tower is pretty much weathered in. About three and a half stories of the second side in Belmont is beginning to tower over the dirt there off of I-85 North. A lot of things happening, a lot of good things happening. Caramont has set records for the last seven days in terms of their number of patients being cared for, census records because of COVID, even though there's conversation that there's some tick down in it, but the hospitalization, those people haven't gotten out as quick as they've come in. So there's still a lot of concern in our community for that and the healthcare workers. The Caramont Foundation Board met today, and there's some good things coming out of that, some things that are in our joint efforts with Gaston College and Gaston County Schools that's going to help us to create a supply of staffing to fill the new hospitals' needs through scholarships and internships that are being developed through the Caramont Foundation. The Caramont Foundation is going to be working very heavily in our community, not for bricks and mortar, but to develop the human capital side of the Caramont needs. And we want to grow those at home. It's no question, if you've, looking at our data from individuals who come into the Caramont employment, if they stay three or four years, they're here. Obviously, the grass is greener happens in year one or two, that many people see something, hear something, react. They're not, they have questions, and that's just what happens in the healthcare field. But we're going to try to approach this with a, with a very local flavor, and that's one of the things that's going to help Caramont continue to be successful in delivering healthcare to the citizens of Gaston County. But that's all I. But that's all I have tonight, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Hovis. I wanted to let the Board know that Commissioner Hovis and myself, Dr. Eagle, and the Economic Development Director, Donnie Hicks, yesterday visited Delandia. It was an economic development project that we put in back in 2016 with the groundbreaking, over 200,000 square feet, and that facility is magnificent in the Bessemer City, sets a south ridge, and we got to go yesterday, and we got to meet the ambassador from Belgium and the council.
General Counsel.
General Counsel of Belgium, and that's a big to-do when you think about who was represented in that building yesterday, and they are starting to get product as they start moving in the door now. COVID had really hit hard, but they had been shipping overseas all their stuff, and they make liftgate systems, and to see some of the liftgate systems, I think, was kind of eye-opening for the quality of the thing. If you think about it on the back of a soft drink truck, have you seen them lift those gates up and down, chairlifts for chair wheelchairs, different type of things, it's just a great company, and I just wanted to say thank you to the Board, and also, Dr. Eagle, for representing us well yesterday in that capacity, because that was a big to-do, and Bessemer City also was involved with that. Mr. Hovis?
The Chair is completely correct. It was great to see these folks after a long absence, they've still had things going on. They have engineers working on the second-floor engineering stations, who are getting familiar with all their plans, revising their specs, revising the translation of their specs and install procedures, they've got a lot of that stuff that's going on, and these people have had opportunity to interface with their Belgium counterparts, Netherlands counterpart, excuse me, to get all this stuff together, so there's a lot of activity going on, although they're not necessarily producing liftgates there now. They have a huge inventory in there now for liftgates that are being marketed in the United States, ready to ship out with complete technical training to all those installed sites, they're all over the United States. So there's a lot of things that are still going on, getting the market penetrated with their product, getting market awareness. They have outfitted a Sprinter van that has five different lifts, all the different component types that you could put into one Sprinter van, is in that one van, it'll be going to all the automotive shows to show people real-world application of their product. It's great to have that U.S. headquarters here in Gaston County without quest, question, and there will be a press release soon to follow with some of that information, but we're very excited to see activity begin to start in that facility for earnest, and it was a great project that was created by both Delandia, the parent company, Cox Sheble, who was the general contractor who built the facility to extraordinary specifications, and Gaston County, our code enforcement. It's one of those few projects where you know that you dotted every i, crossed every t, and nobody ever had any discerning adversarial comments. That's a big move from places we've been in the past, that's the way we're doing business in Gaston County, and that has echoed, and it's echoed loudly because of all these other projects you heard Mr. Hicks talking about in terms of the Apple Creek Park, other projects that we're doing. We are very pro-business, we certainly want to encourage development, we're not discouraging anything, so that word is out there, and people are locating here because of the workforce that we have and the people who have the commitment to our industries that come in this county.
I want to mention something you did mention, you mentioned Cox and Sheb.
Yes.
That was the year, if you remember how all the rain we had.
Correct.
They had to sit the HVAC with helicopters because they couldn't get anything in there, so.
Something to say.
Now comes to the point I get to tell the Board the good news. It was with great pleasure, this Board and everybody, the county has, we're announcing that the compensation study has been completed. All departments were included in the study, and the implementation will be going into effect by the end of month. I want to thank every employee, everyone who gets a check or comes to work every day for Gaston County, I want to thank them for their valued service, they're appreciated, and everything we do from this Board goes forward because they are the outward lying people who always see the face of our community. We get to sit here on this dais, and we get to look at these issues, but they're the real people, and I want to thank any employee in the room, anybody who's listening, anybody who has had anything to do with Gaston County, because without people like yourselves, we would not be able to figure out what's going on. I think the last compensation study was maybe 15 years ago that was actually as complete as this one has been. All departments were included, and everybody was asking, so the surrounding counties and like counties were involved, and I want to thank the manager and her staff for being able to do that. This is a big deal for our employees, we're not going to lose them now to Charlotte and surrounding counties because of the thing this Board has put forward, and I want to thank you, gentlemen, and then I'll thank the other Commissioners as well off that, off the side, but I want to commend the County Manager for your service in doing that, because this was something we asked to do, and we wanted to make sure that we had the best retention and education and employment opportunities right here in Gaston. We've been doing it through economic development, but most of all, we're doing it through the people that we hire, and we make sure that they're a part of Gaston, so I want to say thank you and let you know that you are truly appreciated. Are there any other matters that need to come before the Board at this time? Well, I want to get there, but I hadn't, I just want to make sure that we're good on our side. County Managers' Report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I'll say thank you to our staff as well, and thank, I would like to thank the Board for your support of the compensation study. It is critical in our effort to recruit and retain talent, and without your support, it's obviously not possible, so thank you as well. My report will be brief tonight, you have in front of you a handout that is a copy of something from our website, you have a copy of the strategic plan page on our website, and then a sampling of the general fund dashboard, excuse me. What this is, is a first look at some work that the Budget and Strategy Staff is doing. You all approved our strategic plan a couple of months ago. What we're doing is we're developing some financial and strategic dashboards that you and the public can access to keep up with some of that critical information. So we will have a mechanism where the public can actually email questions or feedback to county staff, so we can create a dialogue, but I wanted you to just have a sample. It will be very robust and very interactive when we get to the fall of this year, you know, we're updating our website, so with the coming of the new website, we'll have an opportunity to have some very effective and interactive dashboards, and I just wanted you to have a flavor of what that might look like. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. Manager. The County Attorneys' Report.
No report this evening.
Thank you, and Ms. Rogers, I want to say thank you for the work you've done in the interim capacity, you have done an outstanding job, and we look forward to continued many years of success in working with you, we know your hard work and your work ethic, so I don't have to worry about that. Any other matters that need to come before the Board at this time? I will close it up. This concludes our meeting, I'm going to take a point of personal privilege as the Chairman, sorry. Every year, we've worked on trying to get new things going on with Charlotte, and we have some local people that I wanted to talk about right quick. There's on-air broadcasting people, and I know everybody will laugh, but they talk about us in Gaston County from over across the river, and these people are taking care of us, so I just want to make sure I gave a shout-out to the ACM-nominated Paul and Sarah Lee and Jeff Show, just want to make sure they know that we're thinking about them, and they are, they are one of the people that makes sure Gaston County has a good name over in the Charlotte market. But this concludes our meeting for tonight, our next work session is February 8 at 6:00 PM in the Hartleby Gaston Public Forum Room. Thank you for watching. If you have any questions or comments, please telephone our Clerk, Donna Buff, at 704-8663-196. Do I hear a motion to adjourn? Motion made by Commissioner Hovis, seconded by Commissioner Warley. All in favor? Good night, rootin', tootin', doodly dootin'.